Thank you all for your patience for our technical difficulties. So at 6:17 on February 19th, we'll begin our public hearing on the site plan review for Sugar and Spice Bakery LLC, MAP U4, Lot 008. It's on 32 Federal Road. We're looking at for a change of view for office space to bakery retail space and cafe. Let's see. Before we open for public comment, I just want to remind you that if, when you're speaking, please stand so we can, and state your name and your address. And it is the board's purview whether or not we allow non-residents to speak.
Do you speak?
Yep. So. Let's start with public comment.
I'll say something. I came up and waited while you had your technical.
Thank you.
My name is Walter Shaw and I live down the road here on North Road.
Yep.
I just want to say you guys should just finish this up with these nice people move their business over there so that they, that we can all spend some more time there. It's a wonderful thing. Parsons Field needs, you know, more stuff to do. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yes, ma'am.
My name's Judy Ingram. I live at 21 Lloyd Watson Road in Parsons Field and I am 100% in favor of these wonderful couple that has brought a bakery to our community and is now expanding it so that it can be sort of a little cafe and people can get together and that's what community is all about.
Excellent. My name is Scott Mounts. I would also like to welcome the bakery and wish them the best. I hope that the town work with them and possibly Southern Maine planning and development to help Mount any which way they could, especially like the sidewalks in front, all the help that they could get from Southern Maine can be great. So I encourage the town to be captain down and to put a plaid in for the bakery folks.
Right. Anyone else who'd like to speak in? Sir, go ahead.
Lil' Dyer, Leaven Hillside Avenue, Parsons Field. And all I can do is echo what's been said previously. Great people, great business, let's support it. Thank you very much.
Would the applicants like to say anything?
All I can say is thank you. We, as we discussed a little bit in our walkthrough the other day, several of us spoke briefly about it at least, that kind of hitting on what Judy mentioned of, you know, a sense of community. We have that in the shop now and we kind of were very proud of it and we look forward to it being bigger. But that sense of community is what we really want to bring to the, to the, to the village, if you will.
Yep.
And I think having a nice little spot like we're, we're visioning will provide that. So thank you everybody that's here for our support. So far this has gone well and we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
I forgot to mention they have the best muffins in town.
Kudos there. That's loud. No favoritism at all, huh? Anyone else speaking on behalf of the couple applying? Board members, comments? So we would need a motion at 6:21 to close the public meeting.
I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Do I have a second? All in favor? That officially closes the public hearing. Now for office work here. We have some correspondence to review. Quite a bit of it.
Yeah.
So if you guys bear with me, I'm going to go through in order I have. Has everybody read the email from Daniel Bushman regarding the change of use for the Chalmers Building?
Yep.
Expressing support. Previously discussed. We don't need to inform the public of what's said here. Is that correct? It's all a matter of.
All public already.
Excellent. Flip through and make sure that we have. Okay, so that's the only email that I see regarding the bakery. I'm going to skip down to the email from Jim Paulette regarding New England Carriage Challenge. It's because other things cluster together. This is a formal request if the public hasn't been aware of it regarding support for, I believe the redistricting was part of his golf cart track or the Saco River Corridor Commission. And Janify May, did it, when I watched the town meeting last week, did the select board agree to provide their support?
Yes, we sent a SSC letter that we had no objection.
Okay. And this is addressed about the planning board and the select board. So it's not an agenda item, but let's just take that into consideration for the moment. Does everybody review the letter? I'm going to move on to the next topic, which would be our, later on, our Reed Lane application. A letter from former attorney, I believe, David, David Lori, reminding us of some of the challenges that faced the original application. Let's digest with that. See in that letter. We can readdress these letters when we get to the actual item on the agenda. Oh, I skipped some of the letters, didn't I? Emails. I'll jump back to that in a second.
I just, it was easier to go.
Sorry, I didn't realize you skipped them together. Did everybody see that letter from attorney Lori?
Yep.
Kind of rewinding back to the New England Kart space. We have a email from Fred.
Fred.
In opposition of modifying the river corridor. Should be brought into consideration. He owns a home at 141 Secaucus Road. Anybody else have an email from 156 residents of Secaucus Road, adjacent parcel, also concerned about noise levels under redistricting? So those are all things to do in New England Carriage. Which brings us back to Reed Lane. Which is just a notice to the abutters. I'm assuming he's also part of the site plan application. All right, and more correspondence. There was some clarification back and forth between the town attorney, attorney McCall and I, trying to clarify our application process for use of cannabis, which is all part of public record. Touch on that under new business if need be. And that is all of our correspondence. Does anyone on the board have questions? Or do not see that correspondence? Couple of those matters are, are part of our agenda later, so I just want to make sure you at least have them. Oh, you have yours.
Yes.
John, you got all yours?
Harvey, you have yours?
You had copies of all the correspondence?
Yes.
Okay, so we can, we can move past correspondence to a review of minutes.
One of this stuff's not available for November 20.
Minutes?
Yep.
Okay.
All the others that say, don't say it's not available are good.
And these will all be on the town website, correct?
As soon as you sign them, I'll scan them.
Okay.
The ones in front of you are the originals for you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have quite a few sets of minutes to go through. So June 19th is not available. I've read through August 21st minutes.
Yeah. How do you want to go through it?
I think they're all going to be posted to the town website, so if the board has no issues with them, we can put a vote if someone wants to make a motion to accept them.
Minutes, all the minutes?
Just, we have to go item by item, August 21st. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes for August 21st.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
I didn't see that one.
Yep. You were a guest that night though. I was like, wait a minute, I saw your name. Okay, so these minutes have been accepted and we can post these Deseray, which will move us on to October 16th minutes. Which was.
Paul, yeah. Carding today.
Primarily New England Carriage. We discussed the meeting day changes, the plane ordinances, meeting day did not change, flood plane ordinances were carried over as we were waiting for some definitions, scheduled a workshop, and then there was a member of the public giving us a heads up on cannabis licensing applications that would be coming in, which seems like forever ago.
It does.
And then we adjourned. These look correct to me.
Yeah.
Do we accept the October 16th minutes?
May I have a second?
Selective.
All in favor? These will be posted as well. Next meeting minutes for the sixth, as a workshop is not available, November 20th. Is that what you just told me was missing, Deseray? So November 20th, 20th, I apologize, is not available. December 6th, sidewalk minutes? Yeah. Maybe not the best idea to hike up a mile of road in the snow.
Good idea when we started.
Yeah. It was, I just have.
We had good intentions.
But Roger refused to give me a piggyback and it was not fun in dress shoes.
No.
So there was only three of us present for that. These all, and the two representatives from Spago Technics who still have not submitted their official.
Yeah.
Start of their application. So this was a very, very preliminary. So we need a motion.
I'll make a motion, we accept the December 6th minutes.
Second? All in favor? Which I had my hand up anyway.
Yeah.
So they're now, will be posted. December 7th, sidewalk for 24 Federal Road. The four of us were present for the sidewalk.
Yep.
As well as a member of the select board and the CEO.
Motion, we accept them.
Do I have a second? All in favor? December 11th and 18th were horrible weather cancellations and illness and. I'm sorry.
Yep.
I've got it in front of me too. December 7th, which is the second sidewalk, which was done at 140 Federal Road, pretty much the same.
Motion, we accept them.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Minutes are accepted. Again, December 11th and 18th, we had a, I believe we had a storm and we had a resignation that provided us not holding.
Yep.
Which the January meetings was a public hearing and Deseray's still working on those minutes, as well as the meetings for January 15th minutes. Then we have a sidewalk from February 15th. Deseray, are we missing the workshop minutes for the 5th of February?
I missed the 15th.
Okay. We'll skip over first to the 15th while we have those in front of us.
Motion, we accept the sidewalk minutes.
All in favor? The matter we're discussing tonight, just bear with us one second and we'll review
I know.
Maybe muffin. That wasn't a bribery.
No. Wasn't even a kid.
Nope.
For everyone, I'm pretty sure the rest of the meeting will go much slower, so be patient, we'll get through this part. Moreau, how are you back there?
Just a hell of a, don't do, do what I mean, so I'm jumping up and down. Yeah. Can you do, talk about that?
What's up, Tom?
They want us to do something, two separate forms.
Thank you, sir. I didn't mind it. Mr. Peppin's first night, I believe.
Yep.
And Harvey's, end of Harvey being an alternate.
Yep. But we accept them as they are.
All accepted.
Yeah, now that we put all of you here through this, these will be posted on the town website if you would like to review the minutes from these meetings, if you weren't attending Which closes the review of minutes and brings us to all of this, which starts with the site plan review for Sugar and Spice Bakery LLC, MAP U4, Lot 008, 32 Federal Road, it's a change of use from an office space to bakery retail space and a cafe. Does everyone have their site plan? Sir, do you have an extra copy of the site plan?
I have one.
Okay, everyone else have theirs?
I mean, you get the general gist of it. It's complete.
So there is a separate piece of paper from the application that I have, maybe mine just apart, which is the separate of a corridor commission's approval. Just because you guys didn't sign it, you are the property owners, right? You bought the property.
I signed the original.
Okay. Perfect.
Awesome.
Just clarifying. Okay, let's go right through this. So we have the name and address of all property owners within 500 feet from the edge of the property line. Everybody laid eyes on the abutters form? Corner and Parsons Field? Does everyone agree that that is there?
Not to be redundant, but we already did all this when we approved it complete.
I know. Following directions?
Yes, sir. Yes, I'm off.
And the sketch map showing the general location of the town was present in the application. Again, this is a review, we've already deemed this application complete. All the contiguous properties under control, the owner applicant. That was met. Please speak up if I'm saying something's met that's not. We see the copy of the deed, correct?
Yep.
Item E has been met. The sketch map satisfied items F and G. And H, I believe. ETL related apply. Location dimensions, driveway streets, parking loading areas, which we also saw at the sidewalk. Intersecting roads. Open drainage. We have a nice drawing of their new sign, just replacing the old sign. There's no existing easements, correct? All building setbacks, buffers required by this, or other town ordinances was met. Back to the ATI, which was met. Not necessary. There's no new proposed driveways, parking or loading areas. Julie noted that we should have some assistance with them for the walkways out front. We do have a copy of their new septic plan. They're not changing the exterior lighting from our sidewalk. Or landscaping or buffering. No applicants, applicable permits that have issued as of yet. There's no exterior construction to be considered. And last is a space for our signature. Does anyone on the board see anything since our initial approval of this being we're concerned for?
Just to query, the new changes to the flood plan ordinances do not apply to this application, correct?
All right, I'm going to go round robin. Jim, anything you're concerned about with this?
Roger?
What's that?
Alternates, you know, you're not voting.
Yep.
So we need a motion to approve the site plan?
I make a motion, we approve the site plan as written.
And a second by Harvey? All in favor? Gladly passed. Welcome to your new space, folks.
Yeah.
We will not be punishing you anymore tonight if you don't feel like staying, Deseray, will write your letter of approval, you're more than welcome to spend the evening with us. About to get excited. On our new business, before we start, we need to consider moving up our alternates. So I would recommend that we move both up for the purpose of voting on our next site plan review, which is 26 Reed Lane. They would need a motion. Just want to do each offer another time.
I think we could do both. Just make sure it says a motion for this application.
So we're going to need a motion indicating both for the purpose of voting on 26 Reed Lane's site application.
I'm making a motion for moving up our alternates for this application of 26 Reed Lane.
Can I have a second? All in favor? So Mr. Moreau, if you would recuse yourself and go sit in the public for a while. Congratulations on the bakery. Welcome aboard.
Roger.
Yep.
Don't know.
So this is our second visitation of 26 Reed Lane site plan review. I guess, the second application that I've seen. There was some early correspondence regarding this that is going to be posted on the town website. Is anyone else here to speak about that particular problem? Besides Mr. Lamond, which I know why you're here. Okay. So let's go through the site plan review, guys. And I would recommend you have your land use ordinance books for reference. So the applicant is Roger Moreau from 570 Maplewood Road in Parsons Field for the site location of 26 Reed Lane, R19, Lot 44, Village Residential Zoning District, and it's 1.24 The nature of the proposed use is for an auto recreational vehicle with small engine repair shop. The existing use of the site is residential. Yeah, village. So let's go through the site. Tonight's purpose is to deem this complete or incomplete.
I have a question for the code officer, Jesse. Reed Lane, Reed Lane.
Yep.
What type of, what is that classified as? Is that a right of way or is it just a private?
Yep.
Okay.
Right of way.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a fully executed and signed application for site plan review plus nine copies. Have we got that? 10 copies of the site plan drawn at scale to allow review, which we do have a separate map here. And the surveyor is present for questions. We have a name and address of all property owners or the abutters list, within 500 feet. We have a name and address of all property owners or that others list within 500 feet. Butter listing as of January 2nd, 2025. The both Parsons Field and Newfield, which are part of us. Desiree, all those letters went out?
Correct.
So everyone satisfied that we met that requirement? Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Just so I can make sure that we're also on audio. Sketch map showing the general location of the site within the town. Leave a location plan for Roger Moreau on the right hand side.
It is present.
Okay. Everyone agrees that that condition has been met? How did you find it? The seventh page end from the beginning. Looks like this. Keep going. One more. Then we can move to item D, which is a copy of the deed. I'm sorry, I'm skipping it over. So that was item B. Item C is boundaries of all contiguous property under control of the owner applicant. Mr. Moreau, what other lots you own that's, you own other lots connect that's contiguous with this lot that you're under?
The one out front. Yes. Formerly just Cynthia Wilson.
Am I just missing that in here?
It's supposed to be. Technically the lot is owned.
Oh, technically, of course.
Technically it's owned, but not.
Okay, so that's, that doesn't apply then?
Yeah.
So that satisfies item C. And there is a deed here. Everyone wants to scan that before item D?
Yep, so the deeds. I saw two deeds, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
One is an easement. And everyone has their lot. Everyone sees the deeds, correct? And the easement deed is attached, which will be an item for later. Name registration, CEO of the Land Surveyor Architect and Engineer Similar Professional, which is the one. We haven't included it yet. So everyone agrees that we have?
Yeah, it's present.
Present? Jimmy, you have, you got a copy of that too?
I do. Got a copy. At home, that looks to me.
No, that's fine. I just wanna make sure that everyone agrees that all these are met. So existing conditions, bearings and distance of all property lines of property to be developed in the source of the information. Roger, you're in my direct line of sight, so. Yeah. There's no one next to you. Did everyone agree that that's been met? Location of any existing sewer and water mains, culverts and drains that will serve the development. There's an existing 20 foot long culvert near the center of your large map. Also existing culverts down below, right near the very center of the fold. Everyone else agree that they've seen those?
You're seeing that the septic is north of the building?
Correct. Site map, site plan map prepared by Mr. Luan shows all the names of the streets and cross streets. Everyone agree to that?
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Jim and Harvey, you guys agree? Item I, AGL, existing proposed buildings on site. Anyone see that mark on the stage here? It's also a site map. Site map indicates, or site plan map rather, indicates the location of existing driveway streets and parking loading areas. It also has the AGL on that too. Didn't see it.
Correct.
Also demonstrates item K, if everyone agrees? If you don't, please speak up.
Feed of sight. Driveways.
Yep.
Bringes, courses, wetlands, yes, yes, yes. Drainage.
So items K and L are on the site plan map?
Yes, yes.
Okay. We have a Roger's arts and crafts project with a sign here.
It's actually my daughter's.
Now I feel like a jerk. Thanks, Roger.
I couldn't draw that good.
We did see the easement deed, which was when you asked me if there was two deeds in there. That's item N.
Do we have?
Right past the first deed.
Uh, no, no, on the sign, do we have a dimension for that?
Or location?
Yeah.
Roger, is it, or Mr. Luan, is there a location for the sign on the?
It's on the map, yeah. Just north of where the access driveway is.
Okay. All right.
Got it. Thank you.
I knew I saw it, but I didn't.
Outstanding. All right, and November, location, type of any existing easements. Yes, we got that. And then?
Location of all buildings, setbacks, yards, buffers required by other town ordinances. Those are in, in.
Very nice site plan.
Again, AGL is located on this larger paper. So is item Q. Does everyone agree with that?
Thanks.
So everybody is agreeing to Q, because I can hear people talking about R?
Yes, all agree to Q.
Yep.
Uh, yep, proposed driveways, parking.
So you are quieter than I am, so I just wanna make sure.
Yeah. And now on R or Romeo, location and dimensions of all provisions of water supply and wastewater disposal. I can't see where the well is. You see where the water supply is?
Well, right up next to his house.
Oh, okay. Yeah, oh, right there. Yep, thank you. Excellent.
In the center, probably the fourth panel over.
Roger, got it.
Toward the far right. Direction of proposed water, surface water drainage.
Yes, to the upper right corner of the building, there's an arrow that says proposed drainage and shows direction of drainage.
So that's my right side, left side. You gentlemen see that as well? Are you guys satisfied with the drainage?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not trying to push you, I just wanna make sure we're covering our bases.
Sorry.
No, location, front view and dimension proposed signs again, which is supposed to be pointed out by Mr. Luan. Location and type of, is there any exterior lighting? So that isn't, doesn't apply.
How big is this sign?
Two by three feet. So I wrote it in there, but that's what it is.
Proposed landscape and buffering, which would be on a large site map.
Did you do lighting?
No.
There's no light. No lighting. Okay. Is there proposed landscape buffering that I'm missing here? No.
Pretty much all natural. Trees, flowers.
A lot of notes on this map, so I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anything. Is there any state applied permits or applications as of this point? There's no construction to be done? So again, we are not approving this application. We are voting if it's complete and then we would need to schedule a sidewalk and a public hearing. Does anyone wanna make a motion that the application is complete?
Make a motion, the application is complete.
Did you say complete?
Incomplete.
Incomplete. What are you missing?
We've seen the right of way for the other lot in front.
Schoolhouse lot?
Yeah.
He owns it.
For the driveway, right? He's got a right of way to it for 50 feet, but there's no right of way extending it to 60 feet. So we need the deed for that before it's complete, right?
Yes. Once we go through the whole application thing, because it's pending on what you guys decide to do before he gets that right of way and everything's good, instead of getting it now and finding out.
Instead of spending the money and having everything converted over, I need an okay first this time around.
So you need to know the application is complete?
I need to get basically complete, yeah. Get an application complete, get it moved forward and get approved, and then I go to the clerk of deeds and have everything written in stone.
You can make it a condition on your plan, conditional approvals that this gets done prior to the application being.
It costs quite a bit of money to have it done by lawyers and having it switched over.
Yep.
I didn't wanna go through that cost and spend more money needlessly and get my foot slammed in the door again.
I had one question, Roger.
Yes, sir.
David Lowery put a letter, I had it on my.
Yeah.
I didn't see it here in my.
He's basically saying that we went to court with Mr. Nulligan and he won his case about me having to have a 60 foot right of way. That's basically what he keeps reiterating and reiterating. And one point of fact that is false, he put on there that I have not enough property to do that, which he puts owned it down there.
Claimed there was a change of use, that's not. You haven't changed anything.
No.
Started. Does, does the fact that this is a rear lot with two, the two purposes come into bearing at this point?
Two separate lots, one use on each lot.
Your house is in a separate lot than the?
The house is gonna be on a separate lot, and the garage is gonna be on a separate lot, so that's a single use on each lot. Like I said, those are expenses.
Well, that's what this is all about.
Right, right.
Okay.
And then, like I said, I'm not gonna make that expense till I get some sort of clarity from, you know, the town and the board, because it costs money. I've already spent $250,000 on this lovely job.
Silly ass thing, I know.
And got nowhere.
I'm just curious, not this.
No, no, I know.
Totally aside.
Yep.
Why didn't you merge the schoolhouse lot with your other lot? That would have given you the frontage and everything.
One's paid off and one is not. That is, that was the problem of doing that.
Yeah.
Getting the mortgage company to agree to merge lots that, you know, sure, they'd love to take my, my lot that's paid for and merge it to a lot that's not paid for, but I don't think that's something I would like to do. No, no, but that, that's, that's the reasoning behind it.
That would have cleaned up everything.
Yep. No, I agree, 100%, but that's the logistics of it.
Yeah.
It was more of a money thing, because they said.
Were you clear from Nulligan now? Has he been?
Moved.
He's gone.
I understand that he's gone, but is he good, right? Hadn't he sent a letter or something?
He sent a letter stating the same thing Mr. Lowery did, that they went.
Sent us a copy of the.
Yeah, they sent a copy of what court had decided.
All right, so there's a bunch of conditions. One is the garage has to be on a separate lot.
Yep.
Right? And, and we need to have, the deed has to be approved for 60.
Right.
Right? And, and if this is gonna be a commercial thing, then we need to know that we've got the right gravel depth and everything else, that it is really a commercial grade.
Right.
Okay, so.
No, I understand that, but like I said, these are all cost. These are.
Right.
You know, I don't know all the words for it, but.
I'm trying to do.
No, 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 I understand.
Meet those things.
Right, no, exactly.
That the town is gonna get them from.
Yeah. Right, no, definitely, I agree 100%. You're asking the right questions.
Right.
I just don't know quite how to word it.
Fires coming in, I guess.
That's why I don't wanna go there. You seem to muck everything up.
Jesse, I got a question for you, like, once this road is, do we have any problem with the distances to the house from the road?
So a right of way is just, there can't be a structure inside of a right of way. The roadway is 15, 18 feet wide. The roadway is 15, 18 feet wide. But it can't be a structure that's inside of that.
So as long as structures are outside of the.
Outside of the right of ways.
Okay.
And they are.
Yeah, and they are. By this plan, I can see.
Yep.
Takes it on that way.
Yep.
The only one that was close was the house, and I have that dimension there that it meets it at 64, 64 and a half feet.
Oh, I'm good with this, if we can make all those conditions.
Yep.
So let's review the conditions.
Do we want to make the conditions as part of the accepting the plan or? Because we're not approving the plan yet.
Right.
Part of accept.
I got a question about that too, Saban. So there was a little bit of a discussion over this whole application. Because he's been to the planning board three times and approved three times on a repair shop.
I agree.
I know.
When, when it went to court, it wasn't his repair shop that came into question, it was the right of way and two uses on that lot.
Right.
So the application should have come in as these changes of the right of way and the, the splitting of the lot, rather than a whole review of his repair shop. So is it really necessary for a fourth time to go out there and do a sidewalk? We're looking at a plan for him to divide that lot and be secure that he's got the 60-foot right of way. This should be common sense, no brainer.
I don't disagree.
In his defense.
I don't disagree. Um, I think with the history of what you've been through and fact that some of your.
Right.
Objectors.
No, I want to go with that.
Reach out that I think.
We're gonna, you know.
Cover his butt, um, and do our due diligence, that we should go through all the steps. I don't disagree that, with the fact.
I don't disagree with what you said. Well, there's these, there's these two points that the court made that they wanted to see, and he has fulfilled that points.
Yep, I read through it. So, I remember from the first time.
Then, why is it?
Remember from the first time, I mean, we, we have representatives from.
If it's, if the repair shop has been approved.
Yeah.
Okay, the only question here is the right of way, the road?
Yep. It was approved through the planning board.
Through the planning board.
And then the butter took him to court, three times.
Okay, was it, then was it unapproved?
Yes, yes, the state found it.
The state found the application was not legit and.
Yeah, right, the planning board.
So, and, and he's been here three times and every time it's been approved, but then the state has come back?
With an approval and then gone to the appeals board from, from the butter.
Okay.
And then it had to go up the ladder to the Supreme Court.
Okay, so all three times, we approved it, but in the end, we got, uh, overruled. All three times?
Right.
Pretty much.
And then he'd come back and get another.
These conditions, he was disapproved on the conditions. You can't, you can't have a rear lot and two uses. So he's taking care of that by.
Yeah, separating.
Sub, and he said rear lot and the right of way most times.
The only unfortunate part of it is, is.
Yeah.
Nobody from the town or anybody caught all this from day one.
It's a commercial business.
They just kept throwing and moving target.
So, so the application here says the proposed use is, is the repair shop.
Right, which is.
But really, what, but what we're doing is subdivision application.
Not a subdivision.
No.
He can legally divide his lot.
Yeah.
Without coming to subdivision.
Okay, so then we come back to what is the purpose of this? It's for the road?
It is a 60-foot right of way that he would only had a 50-foot right of way on the original application.
And he need, and he's required to have a 60-foot?
For a commercial.
So we are here to, to see if his application for a 60-foot right of way is okayed?
That's right.
We're here to approve everything because.
All, all the above.
Everything else was kept. Everything back to the case.
We're, we're.
Oh, my goodness.
We're at point.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, you're better off to go through it.
I have to go through all the motions. I want it done.
Roger, Roger, you're, you're not operating right now, correct?
No.
No, so, so you guys are better off to go through, like, this is a brand new application. Approve the repair shop, look at the right of way, look at the split, look at everything, like this is a brand new application.
Because so far on record, nothing has been permitted to him, is that correct? Because otherwise, we're conflicting. We can't apply for a permitting story in a.
Once, once that came in from the court, he had to shut the doors.
Okay.
And take a sign.
That reverses the purpose.
Yeah, all right.
But, as Jim pointed out, and I think he satisfied your conditions, correct? We've taken care of the back lot issue, and we've taken care of the right of way issue.
Where should we go?
Yep. So, on those conditions, I think is what you were looking for.
Right.
So we would need a motion based on those conditions to accept.
Separate applications for a, for a lot splitting, no? Do you know?
No.
No.
The law is if you break, make three lots in any five-year period, and then it goes through town review because the state mandates of subdivision law. So he's only making two lots. You know?
Right.
As an existing lot, he's creating one lot, so that's two.
Right. It's not a separate permit, I don't.
I don't, no, I don't believe it is. Go ahead, Roger.
Uh, as far as the conditions and stuff, I believe that probably should be done on, on the approval side of it. If it gets approved.
That's my next question.
Put the conditions there.
We can accept the application.
As complete.
As, we can, we can accept the application as complete based on the map.
Right.
And the approval of the application after the sidewalk, would we, where we apply conditions?
If and when you get to.
We're not giving him a permit.
That's what you say, conditions. On the, you know, you're approved under the condition that you do this to the driveway and it meets the standards.
Right.
That's generally how, at least that's what I've read in the book.
It can include a lot of stuff like you have to maintain.
Right.
And all that, planning board.
Get out of here.
But if I'm summing this up.
Can add for a timeline.
And not deal with, um, to have it changed over is completely going to take, what, a couple weeks? Yeah, it depends on how busy my lawyer is.
We already have it on paper, and typically what I'd do is I would write out the description for that, so then the lawyer can take that, uh, description and make it into a, a deed for a right of way easement.
Yeah.
So it's a process.
But yeah, it's not a super long timeline.
I don't think. Harvey asked if we should have a sidewalk, and I don't believe we should skip anything.
No.
Um, even though there's been multiple sidewalks.
How many is it?
Well, if this is considered a brand new application.
It's a brand new application, we can reference the fact of issues before have been met.
30 plowed.
60-foot wide.
Oh, yeah.
30. You have to have a 30.
It, it's, it's 30 foot, actually it falls to the 36, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
What it is.
Have a motion that it's incomplete, that was the second.
That's true. I make a motion that we.
We have to finish the first motion.
Oh.
So I don't. Do I not have a motion that it's incomplete?
No, sorry.
Jim can resend his motion if he'd like.
Send my motion of it being incomplete when we add these conditions to, to the motion.
Do we make motions on completeness?
No, you either rescind your. You either rescind or you stick within somebody's seconds or they don't. And if they don't, then it's dead.
Conditions on the. Is, is if something is missing, like if, if for some reason those plans did not include the 60-foot right of way or did not include the split. That's when I would say that you need to make conditions of, of accepting the application. But everything is included. Right?
All right, I'll rescind my condition of having a, the, uh, the, uh, the 60-foot drive of.
The deed done.
Deed done, yeah, the deed can wait.
You can just say, I rescind my motion.
I rescind my motion.
Okay, so.
I will make a motion.
Okay.
To accept this application as complete with the two conditions as stated by, uh, Jim and the board.
Can we just make the exact same move? We can't, we can't make.
Well, no, he, he was accepting it as incomplete.
Right, we can't make conditions on completeness. We can't. Unless the item's actually missing.
Oh, so nothing's missing, okay, so there you go.
Except, I, I understand that everybody is looking for certain information, and I don't disagree with that. I think that's for our next stage after our sidewalk and our public hearing, it's not for, but we can't get to that point unless we accept the application. The items are there, they just need to be finalized based on the next steps. But I can't make that motion.
So my motion was incorrect. My motion should have been stated as. It wasn't a real motion. It couldn't have been. Nothing to rescind.
Came out.
Not a real one. But I rescind that, even though it wasn't a real one.
So, do we have a motion to accept the application?
I'll make the motion to accept the application.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor? Okay, so improved. All right, and then again, I think Roger's demonstrator, or Mr. Morrow, if we want to be foremost, demonstrated that he's aware of the things that we need to do, but we can make those conditions. Round this wagon a few times.
Sidewalk.
So we need to schedule a sidewalk, Desiree.
Is that dated again?
Saturday, correct?
You don't have a to-go card?
Not that day. We throw out your food trucks or something?
That date's sticking out in my head that I feel like I.
Yeah, I will not be able to attend that one.
Historically, we have done sidewalks on Saturdays that do not have to be done on Saturdays. Is anyone objecting to doing it on a Sunday afternoon? Like 316?
At least this is all plowed out and it doesn't get dark till after 4:00.
316 works for my schedule.
Yeah, I'm good. But 1:00 on 316 work for the board?
1:00.
1:00 on the.
Yeah.
March 16th.
Right.
I apologize, I know I have something on the 15th, I just can't remember. I'm not in town. But I am on the 16th, if we could just, so if we could have a motion for a sidewalk, uh, 1:00 PM on March 16th?
Can you have a sidewalk at 1:00 PM?
Just me and alternate. Uh, I make motion to accept, uh, to propose a sidewalk for 316 at 1:00 PM.
A second? All in favor? That's right, thank you. And then. So, we need a motion for a public hearing on, at 6:00 PM prior to our public meeting for March.
What's the date?
After a sidewalk. 3:19.
Okay, um, all right, I make a motion to, uh, have a workshop on 3:19 at 6:00 PM.
Public hearing.
Clear as one said workshop.
We'll break in.
All right, never mind.
Too much pressure.
Any else want, give me a motion for. A public hearing, sorry.
That's on what date again?
3:19, I make motion for 3:19 public hearing at 6:00 PM.
There you go.
Any seconds?
All in favor? Okay. That matters, move forward. Roger, you can rejoin us, please?
Unbelievable.
Yeah, it's always.
Okay. So, item B is site plan review and conditional use permit applications. I'm not sure this is something we can resolve tonight. I do think it needs another workshop, but.
Sure.
During our last meeting, there were some exchanges back and forth about site plans versus conditional use permit applications, and it turns out that we were not all on the same page or, or that data was incorrect. So, in your documentation with your, that will be posted on the town website, there was a lot of back and forth between attorney. I and I, as I'm trying to understand what exactly it is that we were either doing improperly or missing, and even though we were under the impression that those two items were interchangeable, and we just needed to have a second application or an application with a title change on that. It is not advised that we do that. It is advised that we have two separate applications, even though a site plan application asks for more information than a conditional use permit. Which is confusing to me why we would ask for less information, but, um, so we cannot, we should not go forward using those.
Not a combined application, it should be.
They should be two separate ones.
So, do we want to bring this up in a workshop?
So I do think we need to workshop this, because we also need to workshop policies and procedures.
Okay.
Because the town attorney, um, brought up some items that he felt that we may not be doing properly, that we'd never done in the past since I've been here, as an alternate.
All right.
Trying to be diplomatic about it. I didn't necessarily agree with everything he said, as you'll read in there. Um, and didn't necessarily get the complete clarification I was looking for, and I, and I do to some degree stand my ground on that, but that is not from my own decision, so I do think we need to workshop those particular items.
So we have two items that we, uh, all right, I make a motion to have a workshop that we address the two items of, um, cannabis ordinances, how they apply to how they affect the planning board.
You're back to an alternate, you can't.
Oh, when did that happen?
He only moved up under those two items. So that would be, sorry. Just a small minute in a Sunday.
Actually, I thought, I thought, I thought the bylaw was for the whole meeting.
That was a great motion, you like got it all worked out.
I, I'll second that. Sure, it's for the whole meeting. I, I don't think you can undo it for the meeting.
We only specifically worded it that was for this.
For the site plan. Oh, was it? Okay.
Yeah. Or I would be happy to entertain it because that was perfect.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, uh, look at whatever the lawyer said.
So a workshop for.
Workshop for cannabis.
Time for.
Yep, upgrading our conditional use.
And I also, well, let's finish that motion. That would be our first, um, first Monday in March. So do we have a second on that?
A second.
All in favor? Desiree, can we see if the, if Attorney McCall is available to come to the workshop?
Yeah. I will ask.
Because the town attorney has weighed in, MMA bows out, so they are not a resource for us to use at this point. Currently. So my suggestion is for the board and anyone that wants to attend that workshop, that you read through the conversation back and forth and email back and forth between Attorney McCall and I. I'm sure he finds me to be very difficult, but I just was trying to get 100% clarification because I'm still confused at where things went south. So, that would clarify that, so the board, the workshop will be, it will be, it will be. Also in that workshop, we need to discuss the town attorney's purview is that a town staff member, which would be our planning board secretary, cannot write letters of approval, which they've always done. And that all letters of approval must be voted on by the board, which we already, which means we're approving, we're voting to approve something we approved. So that needs to be, we need to workshop it, but we need to do some research beforehand to make sure, because I don't know where that's coming from. Because again, it's never been that way. And Jim, when you were with the Board of Appeals, did you, did your secretary write your letters of decision? Okay, who is a town staff member?
That's right.
Wow, queen of conflict over here. I just, again, now you can see why I'm confused, because this is.
Application approval.
Yep.
The only other person I would go to would be the town clerk, right?
No, I think it would either be the town clerk or one of the planning board members would have to write the, the way I took it, would have to write the letter of approval, and then it would have to come back to the board, which then delays another 30 days. My concern is due process for our, for our applicants.
I agree.
So there's a lot of conflict.
Don't we empower her?
We do.
That's what we do.
That's what we need to work out and we need to research it, because I don't want to.
Right.
You know, basically.
So we need to look at the definition of her position as it applies to us, to see if we've empowered her in that definition.
Yeah, we, we need more research and more data, because I basically said, you know. Which isn't necessarily the best way to go. I, I just stood my ground on the fact that I don't think that we have done anything wrong as a board, we, and maybe because we have done it since I was an alternate years ago. But I don't want us to go forward and make errors, so we need to come to some sort of agreement with the attorney, and we have to figure that out by doing some research, because we don't have some of the resources, because the MMA, I asked Desiree to email MMA, based on that email chain, and they said they would not weigh in.
Yep, all right, so that's a workshop.
That's a workshop.
Excellent, okay.
But they're very important items that we need to cover. But they're very important items that we need to cover, um.
Two people that are waiting for letters still in limbo.
So here's the other issue, um, because it's all based around the same thing. In the process of what we thought was a simple change of verbiage based on the fact that we approved those applications, we also outsourced our thirty-day period to reconsider it. So, Attorney McCall also wanted us to reconsider both of our decisions that we made on our previous applications, which I also kinda said no. I didn't say no, I just said we made those decisions. We just hang by them, and I did say that if he didn't feel Desiree had the authority to sign those letters, that I would sign them. Because that's what we would do. She signed on the, on the chairperson's behalf, um, which he kinda said, no, 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 and I said, yes, yes, yes. But then, boop, thirty days was up, so we're over. So, we do not have the purview to reconsider those applications anyway. And I believe that one or both are under appeal, just one is under appeal, which takes it out of our hands anyway, at this point. How it goes forward, I don't really know, because I think there's a conflict on the appeals board, which means it's stuck, because.
It's still out of our hands.
Well, Desiree is a member of the appeals board, so it's in my opinion that she, that that, she has to recuse herself, which I don't think that means they have a board to hear it. Because she was specifically called out as a reason why this application wouldn't have been properly correct.
The CBA will be, we are scheduling meetings with the CBA, the other two members will need to vote and take into consideration the applicant's opinion of my participation in meetings I anticipate.
And if no one else appeals that as well, too. It's a hot topic, and again, I go back to the fact that we're all neighbors, and I wish we could find better ways to move things out than chasing circles. I go right back to some of the minutes that are being posted online that I think, that I remember saying, in fact, on August twenty-first, I said that this was gonna be a mess. And it's a mess, but it's nobody's particular, there's no mal, there's no malice to this at all, on anybody's part, so I think there's a lot of finger pointing, the selectmen are getting crapped on. They're getting crapped on, you're getting crapped on, the applicants are getting crapped on. What we have to do is find our way out of this mess, and I think that that workshop is very important, and we can't just come in and chat about it. I think it does involve doing some homework ahead of time, if anybody will get these applied themselves to that.
And if we can get a select, at least a select board member.
I think we should have a select board member here.
I agree.
And also the town attorney. Jen is always good at speaking in town matters. Um, but I think it's just very important that we're all on the same page, because it's not fair to anybody that comes before us, and I said this before and I say it again, whether it be a property owner, a, a business operator, a landlord, an employer or employee, whenever there's not due process, someone is paying the price down the road. And it's not fair, and it's, we all wanna see everything succeed, you know, and, you know, we can't do what I just said, is saying, you know, oops, sorry we screwed up, and let's give a waiver and approve everything and deal with the future, because this didn't go the way we thought it would, because we weren't ready for it. But that is my personal opinion, and I'm not speaking for you guys. So, that's what the workshop's all about. I'm not throwing anyone under the bus, but myself, as I said, I was very much the one that contacted Attorney McCall, and I was very much the one that was a stubborn ass about it, and I don't back down to those statements, but it's not my place to. Well, we're past the thirty days, so I can throw a tantrum all I want, it doesn't really matter. Let's make sure we do our homework. We can get the town attorney here. Was, um, Jen, could you be present?
I would be.
For our workshop, and try to civilly work this out, so we can figure out the best way, not necessarily for ourselves, because we don't wanna screw anything up in the future, but for the applicants and the property owners and everything else. We need to find a way around this that's gonna make it work for everybody.
I agree.
So, miscommunications happen, and apparently there was just a miscommunication, and, um, no one's, there's been no malice on anybody's part on any of this stuff, it's just we gotta get it worked out for everybody. So that would move past that last item. And we automatically scheduled the workshop, so we just went boom, boom, boom. As much as I look forward to it, this is public comment time. What's next?
Does it have to be civil?
I'll wrestle you in the hallway if you. I'm sure that I'm gonna get.
Freedom of speech, you can do whatever you want.
I'm gonna go always up, you know, I, I. People either like me or they hate me, but I speak whatever's on my mind, and I try to be honest, and I just think, we're still all neighbors, and we have to find a way to get to the bottom of it. And if there's, everybody's getting the short end of the stick on some level here, you know, we're the, the shit that I'm hearing in town about everybody from, somebody sitting at my restaurant the other night talking crap about the planning board and me, and I was, oh hey, by the way, I'd like to meet you. You know, the number of people that call me to shit on the selectmen, I don't really give a crap, and one day, way more important things to give. We can, we can get through this, we just have to work together as a team. And it just is gonna involve doing some homework before we get here, because we will have no more further information than we have right now if we don't. So, this is a true workshop, like, you know, this is your teacher telling you to do your homework before you come, so we can come up with some suggestions.
That's what it takes to build the better.
And I don't think there's any party that isn't willing to try to work through this, it's just finding the right solution that goes between our ordinances, because again, we're bound to ordinances. So, that's just my lecture of the night. Any other public comments? Seems I seem to be the one making it. Diarrhea of the mouth? Okay, um, just as public comment, I've changed my email address. I know it doesn't really seem to matter unless you're on our email chains today. So I, I usually use my work email, and Desiree's gonna update that for Planning Board Business. However, I've been inundated with some hefty emails that are inappropriate for me to deal with while I'm at work, so I'm using my personal. It is, and stop emailing me. No, it is there. So my, it is not public.
Planning board emails are not available to the public.
Unless requested under Freedom of Information Act.
Okay, right, but any communication to the planning board should go through the planning board email and be disseminated to all of the, all of the members. So, you, Scott, you can't just email Saban out, you gotta email me.
So just so you know, it does happen very often that people email me directly about something related to the planning board of the town, and what I, and Desiree will tell you, the first thing I do is forward it to her and say, please enter this into correspondence, because I do not wanna be ex parte. Nor do I, nor do I communicate, and I know that you go through that of the town, and we're all accused of doing it. Somebody accused me today of having backdoor meetings with Harvey six months ago out in the parking lot, which I have no clue what the hell they're talking about.
Did you?
Harvey, you'll have to tell me, because I'm getting old, I don't remember. It didn't happen, it's just that, it's small downs, so.
That was a different time.
Yes. That was, I think it was about your wife's birthday, but. Jen?
Along the same line, Saban, the ex parte communication, when you have conversations with an applicant after their application has been submitted to anybody, um, it's not allowed, so.